Jolly will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Good evening again, Livonia, and welcome to the May 11th, 2020 study session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,897th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, May 27th, 2020, and we will, that meeting will be held in the Zoom format as this meeting is. We have all members of the council with us this evening. I don't have any announcements to make. The only, the only announcement that I have to make is that I didn't do this for the first meeting for the regular meeting, but we are, as you can see, utilizing the Zoom format as allowed for by the Governor's Executive Order, and we are in compliance with the requirements for audience participation. I am the only one that's on site. I'm in the council chambers on the second floor, and the other council members are all working from their homes and joining us remotely, and I believe the clerk and the city attorney may be in their offices, but we are all following the required workplace policies, and we will continue to do that for all the, all the Zoom meetings. Council, does anyone have any announcements that they would like to make? All right, seeing none, we will go to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is their opportunity to do so. All right, I don't see anyone, so with that, we will, we will go ahead with our meeting. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. However, the council members may offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting agenda for the meeting of Monday, May 11th, 2020. No, that's not right. The, that would be tonight. Move on to the regular meeting of Wednesday, I'm sorry, May 27th, 2020, where they will officially go to the. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, instead of approaching the podium, please use the, please use the raise your hand function on, on Zoom, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please raise your hand when you, when you wish to speak. And when you are recognized, please state your name and address for the record if you would like to, so that your remarks, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the council and the others in the audience, let them know who is speaking to them. All right, and with that, we will move ahead with our new business agenda. Item number one is the reappointment of Sam Caremagnon to the Livonia Planning Commission. This comes to us from the officer, I'm sorry, from the office of the mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on June 9th, 2023.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
I would like to offer an approving. For consent, there's no objection.
All right, council, any, any objections, comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to say that I believe Sam has served before, has done an excellent job for our city and our residents. So I concur with Councilman Dominic, Dominic, no, no, Donovan, sorry. No, Sam, Sam's done an outstanding job, so we look forward to, hopefully, he gets votes and he gets out again.
Yes, indeed. All right. I don't, I don't see that anyone else, well, I do see, let me see, let me see who's got a hand up. Go switch over here. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just say, it looks like items one, two, and three, we have like an all-star cast of commissioners. And I look like, I look forward to supporting each of them continuing their service. Mr. Caremagnon, Mr. Long, and Mr. Ventura. Each of them are valued assets to the city, and we know that they do try their best, and they deserve their reappointments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we've got, we've got Mr. Caremagnon's reappointment to the Livonia Planning Commission set for the consent agenda of Wednesday, May 27th.
Madam President.
Yes. That's a, Council, Vice President Barr.
I was just gonna say, I, I know Sam is here. I'm assuming the others are as well. Do we, I think we usually give them a chance to say a few words if they want to. Maybe we're getting there, but I just want to remind you.
I am getting there. Let's see. Mr. Caremagnon.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
We're good. How are you?
Doing just fine. You know, I'd like to certainly thank the mayor for the opportunity to be reappointed, and I'd like to thank all of you for, for your consideration and, and reappearance as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagnon, and thank you for your service to the community in this regard and in a number of others, too. And we, we hope that you are continuing, that your recuperation from your knee surgery is continuing along at a good pace, and we're all looking forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
All right, so that's on the consent agenda. Item number two is the reappointment of Glenn Long to the Livonia Planning Commission. This too comes to us from the officer of the mayor for a three-year term, which expires on June 9th, 2023.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember.
I'll offer a approving resolution for consent. Mr. Long's done a great job on the planning commission. His position as, acting as a CFO for many years, and then his civic duty with the ICRI and through the hockey programs has been great through the community. So there's no objections like that for approving on consent.
All right, anyone else from council, any comments? From the audience? Mr. Long, would you like to, would you have any words to say?
Thank you for the faith and the ability, the opportunity to continue to do this. I think it's a very strong commission. You know, it has a lot of different, diverse background, bankers, construction, real estate, accounting. So I mean, it, we kind of hit things from all sides and look forward to working with you and with the mayor on continuing to make Livonia great.
Excellent, and we know you've been kept very busy at your day job with the Detroit Economic Growth Corporation, and I don't, I think you were on the regular meeting, and I believe you heard your organization reference. So your, your contributions and your work are important in this community and certainly to our region, too. So that will be on the consent agenda. Let me go back. I see someone has a hand up. Vice President Barr.
Yeah, I just, I was just gonna piggyback off of what Glenn just said. It's a perfect opportunity to just affirm that. I, as someone who, who tends to read through all of the planning commission meeting minutes when we have an item on our agenda, I just want to echo what you said, Glenn. We really do have a strong team down there right now, and I, I, I'm often struck at the, the breadth of perspectives and professionalism that comes in, in the comments that are made during those meetings. So I, I just wanted, it's not often we're here talking about the planning commission. It was just an opportunity for me to say that. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
President Barr, yes, who was that? Was that you, Mr. Long?
Yeah, sorry.
Think we lost you.
No, I just was saying thank you to Council Vice President. That's all, sorry.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Item number three is a reappointment of Peter Ventura to the Livonia Planning Commission. This too comes to us from the office of the mayor for a three-year term expiring on June 9th, 2023. Council?
Yes. I'd like to move that to consent for the very capable Peter Ventura.
All right, would you like that placed on consent?
Yes, please.
Does anyone else have any? Seeing none, I see that Mr. Ventura is with us. Good evening, Pete.
Good evening, Council President McIntyre, and good evening to all of the council members. It's been very interesting watching you go through your agenda this evening, and I'm always impressed with the detail that you go into and the thoroughness with which you consider everything that's on your agenda, and it stands Livonia in good stead, and it makes us a great community. I want to thank the mayor for the opportunity to continue to serve, and thank Councilmember Toy for the appointment, and tell you that I look forward to continuing my service to the city.
Well, we're delighted to have it, and Pete, you've offered, you've offered so much service to our community in so many ways, and it's, you know, just outstanding to have you on the planning commission. And as I believe I recall correctly, you have served as the chairperson of our master planning committee. And that was a lot of work and required very, very strong leadership, which, which you, you gave many times over. So we're all, I think, I can say we're all looking forward to continuing to serve with you and have the benefit of your knowledge and expertise and thoughtfulness, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just add to that, with your kind words as well, the Ventura family, as you know, his father was also a council member on the, this very, well, not this one, but the city council years back and did a terrific job, and he, he gave a great example to his children, particularly Pete, it's really just been such a huge asset to us, as you described as well. So thanks, Pete, and thank your family as well.
Well, thank you very much, Councilperson Toy, and the part that I'm playing is much less than my father played, but I'm happy to have the opportunity to make a contribution.
All right, well, thank you, Pete. Stay well, and we'll see you soon.
Same to all of you.
Thank you. Item number four is a reappointment of Janice Centers to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Councilmember Jim Jolly for a three-year term expiring on July 12th, 2023. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, and to educate the public watching here, one of the opportunities that council members have once they're elected is to appoint somebody to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Centers is currently sitting on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and although this is my first appointment, I did do research and spoke to other people on the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as petitioners who've gone before the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have decided to reappoint Ms. Centers to continue her work on the Zoning Board of Appeals. She is a higher education professional at Madonna University and has been active also in the Livonia J.C.s. I think she's added a unique perspective to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I think she'll continue good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly.
She's also on the phone.
I know, I know she is. I'm sorry, did you offer the approving resolution?
Yeah, I'd like to offer it for consent.
Very good. Council, if no one has any objections or any questions, we will then go to Ms. Centers, who's in the audience. Janice.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I, I have enjoyed my first three years of the appointment, and I just wanted to thank everyone for their consideration and opportunity to continue to serve. Not only have I enjoyed my time learning, but I've also enjoyed my time with my other board members, and it's been a great opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Janice, and that, we will, you're on the consent agenda, so you do not need to Zoom back in with us on the 27th, but we're all looking forward to your continued service to the city, and we all look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Number five, excuse me, is the reappointment of Joel Turbiak to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Scott Barr, the Council Vice President, for a three-year term expiring on July 12th, 2023. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, Madam President, thanks for the opportunity to do the reappointment of Joel. Joel and I, as many of you know, have known each other since high school, and as he became more and more engaged in our city over the last five years or so, it's been a joy of mine to be able to help find opportunities for him to get more involved. He spent some time on the traffic commission and then went to the ZBA to fill, I believe it was to fill an un, previously, or a unfulfilled term there. And it's time to reappoint him, and it's absolutely my pleasure to do so. He's, he's very thorough with what he does. He's very intelligent. He loves the city. He pays very close attention to not just ZBA, but even what we're doing here on council, and I often appreciate his insight and his thoughts. So it's my pleasure to reappoint him. He's also got a young family that really represents a lot of what we're about here in Livonia. So glad that he's willing to do it, and I'm glad to reappoint him.
You'd like that on consent?
I would like that consent, if there's no objection. I, Joel could speak up if I'm wrong. I don't see him here tonight. I had talked to him, and he is aware and eager to continue serving, so.
That's, that's fine, and I know that he, as you mentioned, he has a young family and a lot going on, and these are just difficult times and extraordinary times. So council, are there any objections, questions? Seeing, we will place Mr. Turbiak's reappointment to the ZBA on the consent agenda for May 27th. All right, item number six is a request to authorize payment to a, to a, to an election source. I think this may have been a single source. This comes to us from Office of City Clerk for the preparation of test ballots and testing of all election equipment by approved state vendor for the presidential primary election that was held March 10th, 2020. Okay, so this is the payment, this is payment to the vendor for equipment that was used in, in March. And Susie, I'm gonna go to you to, to help us get clear on what exactly we're approving. I'm sorry for my confusion.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, this is payment for a sole source provider for testing of equipment prior to the primary. The good news is the $27,209 will all be refunded.
Okay.
This is a refunded expense. The March primary is refunded to us, and we are in the process right now of putting all of our receipts and our expenditures together. So it is the one, well, one election unless someone calls for a special election that we do get fully refunded. That'll be a nice check to get back.
Thank you, and now I remember in the packet reading that, and I knew there was something about this that I wasn't remembering. So thank you for explaining what it was. Council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
It's a great privilege to have an approving resolution on this, seeing as we get all the money back. That's awesome. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam President, and thank your staff as well.
All right, we will place that on the consent agenda if there are.
Thank you, color.
If there, if there are no objections, we will place that on the consent agenda for the May 27th meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Toy, and thank you, Clerk Nash. Item number seven is a ward of bid. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for supplying the road maintenance section with hot and cold bituminous materials for the period May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Good evening, Mr. Rushlow, and please correct my pronunciation if that was wrong.
No, I believe that's correct. Sorry, I was being joined back into the meeting with the video. I may have missed part of that.
My gosh, you look like, you look like you're anchoring for Channel 4, it kind of. Anyway, okay, so it is pronounced bituminous?
Correct, yeah, bituminous materials. So that's, that is our asphalt materials, both hot mix asphalt for paving as well as cold patch for road maintenance. So this item is a recommendation for award of those bituminous materials. This is an annual item that's done through a public competitive bid process. Bids were received on April 28th for these road maintenance materials. All the materials, just so you're aware, with the exception of the cold patch, are items that we pick up by the DPW personnel from the vendor's plant. So the final pricing that you'll see in the bid packets reflects round-trip mileage cost to and from the vendor's plant back to the city. So, so in their bid prices for the unit price of the materials, we also factor in that round-trip mileage cost for us to pick it up and bring it back. So it's our recommendation through the Public Service Division that council proceed to accept the lowest qualified bid by Ajax Materials and Cadillac Asphalt for their low bid unit price items for the materials types and prices specified in the submitted bids to supply the Public Service Division with both hot and cold bituminous materials for the period running from May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. And second, in the event that the lowest bidders, for whatever reason, may be unable to furnish those materials, to also authorize the second low bidders at their bid prices to be accepted as alternates if needed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rushlow. Council.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow. Just a quick question. So after reviewing, kind of reviewing the, the bid specs and the, and the bidders, do you know, is there, was there any reason why Nagel did not offer delivery service? Because their numbers looked pretty good, if I'm right.
You know, I'm, I am not sure if that was something that they had offered through these bids or not. I'm flipping through the, the document here myself just to check on that.
Yeah, because just out of the three, the three that we would, I mean, obviously, they're on Amerheim, so it's a nice little click to be almost like a satellite yard for our DPW. And then on top of that, you know, I just was curious. I mean, obviously, through the bid specs, they didn't list anything for delivery, but I'm just thinking about the air and tearing the vehicles. Just a question.
Yep, fair question.
All right, did that answer your question, Councilman McCullough?
So, Mr. Russell, there was no, there's no explanation for that, right?
No, I apologize. I do not have an explanation for, for how or why they may or may not have included that in their bid prices.
With that, I mean, everything else seems in order. I have no problem with offering an approving, approving resolution for consent.
Council, anyone have any, any objections to putting on consent? Go to the audience, see if anyone in the audience would like to make any comments or has any questions. Seeing none, we will place that on the consent agenda for the May 27th meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Rushlow, and we will continue on with your department. And number seven is also an award of contract. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for sewer line chemical root control services from budgeted funds.
Yes, thank you. As you had stated, this is a recommendation for award for sewer line chemical root control services. This was a bid that was done through the open competitive public bidding process. This is a four-year contract to chemically treat sanitary sewer lines with a foaming herbicide. This is really a proactive preventative measure to reduce nuisance root growth that can occur in public sanitary sewers, which can cause, cause problems with the flow rate and things through the sewer. So in the end, after the bids were received on April 21st, Duke's Root Control was the sole bidder that had submitted prices. Their bid prices represent an average increase of about 6% from what they had previously done for us in the past, just for a little bit of history. So Duke's has been performing sewer root control here in the city for us since 2011. They have very extensive experience throughout the industry, and they hold a great understanding of our sewer system. So just referencing their, their previous bid, which was 2015, and they've been holding those prices since 2015, these current prices represent about a 6% increase from the 2015 prices. So it's our recommendation from the Public Service Division that council proceed to award a four-year contract to Duke's Root Control with the option for a one-year contract extension to perform all work necessary to complete the root control program and authorize an expenditure from approved budgeted water sewer funds in an amount not to exceed $60,000 annually.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember White.
I'll offer approving on this, on consent, if there's no objection.
Madam President, I have a question, if I may.
Yes, certainly.
Mr. Rushlow.
And just, then, then we have, we have questions from Mr. McCullough and Mr. Donovan. And if I could, I could ask council members, and it's not a, it's not a protocol thing, if, if you remember to use the raise your hand function, because I can't see everyone at the same time at the top of the screen, but go ahead, please, Councilmember Jolly, and then we'll go to Mr. Donovan and then to Mr. McCullough.
Mr. Rushlow, are there any in this, concerns in the industry in regards to herbicide being used? It seems like there would be something concerning in regards to putting herbicides in the water stream that would go ultimately to our water, water sources.
So the, the herbicide that's used in our performance specification that's set out with exactly what you can or cannot use, there's a very tight spec that includes the exact product that's approved through the U.S. EPA for this exact application in a sanitary sewer line. So this root foaming herbicide is only used in sanitary sewer lines. That goes, you know, carries through the conveyance system downstream to the wastewater treatment plant facility, where the water is obviously treated, cleaned, and then discharged at their effluent rate back into the, in this case, it's the Detroit River, but back to the river at the effluent that's also approved with the specifications by the state for discharge from wastewater treatment plants. So to answer your question, this is not a concern because it meets the specs that are required by the U.S. EPA for this product for use in a sewer.
Okay, well, you know, I'd like to do some more research in regards to just the environmental process here, so I would like this on the regular. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow, just a, basically, kind of a statement. I was kind of reading through the packet, and Duke's, I have bandwidth with Duke's. They're probably the best run in the metropolitan area. I was just really surprised, and you know, for all the people that are out there watching that, kind of a statistic is 18,000 feet sewer lines that we treat per roots each and every year. Testament on preventative maintenance, because always, you know, people are first to point out anything that breaks, but what you guys do behind the scenes to prevent future breaks, so that is, that is a nice thing. So yeah, 18,000 feet, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that recognition as well.
And, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Rushlow, thanks for everything you guys are doing. Can you shed some light on the preventive maintenance, the pipes that are identified by your guys' department? Are these the pipes that are, say, for instance, from the storm drain in a commercial parking lot to the main road? Or are these the only lines that are along main roads and whatnot?
Councilmember Donovan, so these are primarily sanitary sewer lines. So not to be confused with the storm drains, this is only for wastewater. So not stormwater runoff, there's no, you know, discharge directly to a stream. This is sanitary sewer lines only, just to clarify that. The, the way that we really identify which pipes need this work is really just through our normal preventative maintenance, where we're out doing normal routine cleaning and video inspection of sewer pipes throughout the city. We're on about a five-year cycle of cleaning and inspecting all the sewer pipes throughout the entire city, which is about 470 miles of pipe. So that preventative maintenance of just inspecting and seeing the condition of those pipes allows us to find some spots that we have concerns, where you'll see root growth coming in through some, some old joints or cracks in the pipes. That may not be bad enough to where we need to repair the pipes, but it would be helpful to, to maintain the full conveyance capacity of those pipes to flow, to get those roots cleaned out. So we identify those bad areas with roots and put them on this list, work with Duke's on which ones we're gonna target each year to, to meet our budgetary goals and get that work done.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Russell. Just a testament to your guys' department, kind of like Councilman McCullough said, tree roots and pipes just don't mix, and tree roots, the roots can span hundreds of feet. span hundreds of feet for pipes. And this, these sort of measures can save the city and taxpayers like some millions of dollars probably over the course of a lifetime because roots just tear apart pipes. So thank you guys for all what you're doing in your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob, we only had, we only had one bidder, correct?
That is correct.
Is Duke's the only? Is that, I can't remember in past years if we had multiple bidders.
Um, you know, the
We just lost audio.
I accidentally hit my, accidentally hit my mouse and muted myself. I apologize. So the last time we bid this was five years ago. We did have one other bidder who attempted to, to provide us with a bid. They failed to meet the performance specification. Kind of going back to Councilman Jolly's comments with the, meeting the EPA regulations on, from the US EPA on the actual composition of the foaming herbicide to make sure that it's safe to use. That other company did not meet those specifications, so their bid was deemed non-responsive. They did not meet the specs. So in that instance, Duke was essentially the only bidder, even in 2015, because that other company failed to meet our spec. In, in this case, they were the only one that even attempted to bid on this this year. And like I said, we've had great experience with them in the past. They've done a great job and continue to do so for us, hopefully in the future.
All right. Thank you. That's why I don't remember last year, because it's, it's a five-year program.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I think, I believe we've had this offered for the regular agenda for May 27th, 2020. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment or question? Seeing none? We will, uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number nine. I'm sorry, we're moving on to new business, a part of our agenda, and this is item number nine. This is a request to amend Council Resolution 412-19 and authorization to purchase furniture. This too comes from the Public Service Division. This is to reduce the GMP payable to Di Maria Building Company Incorporated to $9,032,452 in order to purchase furniture for the DPW building. And I'm going to insert in here directly from furniture manufacturing in an amount not to exceed $207,000 from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow.
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Council President. So first thing I want to mention on this item is we're bringing this to you this evening really as a request for a cost savings measure. Originally, the purchase of the furniture that was included in the GMP had a line item of about $183,000 in that contractor's guaranteed maximum price, or GMP for short, which is their total price to complete their scope of the project on this buildout, which is to Di Maria. As we finalize the design, you know, the GMP is created at about an 80 to 90% completion of the design plans. As we finalize the design and really start to dive deep into the workspaces, it became apparent that we would need to do a few more things with some of our storage areas, bringing engineering into this building and what we need to do with both their large plans like MyLars and things in their flat files, as well as sensitive survey equipment and how those can be stored in some cabinetry to make sure that that is kept safe. So the adjusted furniture quote through that process, the price went up to about $196,700. So our team continued through this entire process, both on the furniture side as well as other aspects of the building, continue to collaborate with the architects and the contractor to keep costs under control. We're frequently meeting with them to, with, and the construction team to review proposals from subcontractors to look at value engineering and different alternatives. So one of those recommendations coming out of these collaboration meetings with the contractors and the architects is to remove this furniture item from the, the GMP with Di Maria and making that a direct purchase with the vendor. So that does a few things for us. First, it, it takes out the contractor's fees, their markups, their contingency that goes on the entire project cost. It knocks that price down a little bit. And it also saves us from having to pay sales tax, which is really just a pass-through from Di Maria. In this case, as a direct purchase through the city, that would not apply. So overall, when we add up all those little pieces, that adds up to about $23,000 of, of savings just by switching to a direct purchase with the vendor instead of passing it through the contractor. So ultimately, the total cost of the project that was previously approved by council would not change at this time. And no additional appropriation of funds would be needed to, to make this direct purchase. What we're asking the council to do and recommending that you proceed with to do is to approve the purchase directly through the vendor, Kentwood Office Furniture, in an amount not to exceed 207,000, which, as I stated previously, the quote was 196. We're looking to add again, for other changes that may occur when we're, when we're looking in, getting into the building of what furniture may need to go where. 5% contingency because we haven't actually built anything yet. We're we've been by the site lately. We're doing earthwork. Land balancing is pretty much done. We're starting on foundations. But we're very, very early in this project, so it's appropriate and, and standard to have a contingency on those types of purchases. So that's why we're asking, uh, in an amount not to exceed $207,000. And secondly would be to amend the Council Resolution 412-19, which was the GMP to Di Maria, reducing that amount to $9,032,452.
All right. Thank you. Um, I see that we've got two hands up, Councilmember McCullough, and then, and then Councilmember Jolly.
Thanks, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Russell, just out of curiosity, would you, is it early enough in the process, or do you guys actually have layouts and any kind of renderings on what you're currently looking at to get to that estimate?
We do, yeah. So at this point, Councilmember McCullough, we, we, we do have the floor plans done. We have taken with Kentwood and worked with them as the, as the low bid through Di Maria. We have taken that framework of the floor plans, met with our staff, engineering department, our other divisions here in DPW that are going to be in that, in that building with the administration and water and sewer, and looked at all those spaces and uses and created a furniture plan. That was what was originally in the GMP. Through that process, we've continued to tweak that as we dive deeper and deeper and deeper into the details. You know, as you look at things, you, you tend to think about more things that may apply, especially with spaces and how you're going to use them once you're in the building, of course. You have experience with that. So, so through that process, we have really gotten a, a really good understanding of what we're going to need for furniture. And I think we're in a good spot here with what we have proposed in front of us.
Perfect. The reason I ask that is, um, would it be possible, you know, I'm thinking about offering a resolution for the regular. The reason I ask that, if there's any way to maybe get the renderings, just so we can look at it in a packet, because if you guys take it into consideration, then, you know, I know how fun it can be to go through space planning with all the synergies with different divisions and departments. But now you have to throw COVID-19 into it and your, you know, your social distancing. I, I just like to put a set of eyes on it, just to make sure that you guys didn't need, you know, do you guys have any barriers or ski shields or things like that? So we're not having to reinvent the wheel and modify the space after you're done.
Yeah, we, we can certainly provide, um, you know, those plans are available. They're public documents, you know, so we can, we can provide those to you certainly. Councilmembers are certainly welcome to attend our team meetings that occur every other Friday where we're going into these details. If you want to, you know, join some of those meetings, we're happy to have anybody on council that would like to attend and see how things are going or give their input in those meetings. That's more than welcome. But in, in the, in the meantime, we can certainly provide those drawings to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to, just a second, a point, point of privilege. I, I know that Councilmember Jolly and Scott are wanting to talk. Jacob, didn't we have, wasn't Council, former Councilmember Kritzman part of that, part of those meetings and that team?
Uh, yes, that is correct. The, the council had appointed two council members to the project team, and that was, as you had mentioned, former Councilman Brandon Kritzman, as well as Councilmember Kathy White is also a member of that committee.
All right. I'm wondering, and we'll, we'll take this offline, and that, this is the reason I interrupted to ask. I, I wonder if we should appoint another council member in Kritzman's place. So we'll take that up offline. Thank you very much. We have, that's going to go on the regular, and then we've got Councilmember Jolly and Vice President Barr. Jim?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Rushlow, are you able to give us any updates to the timeline for construction and completion at this point? I know there's a lot of balls up in the air in regards to this, but.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. Um, so, you know, we, we started to break ground just before we had some shutdowns in place across the state, you know, and things really, really hit the brakes there. We were fortunate enough that we were actually a bit ahead of schedule when that occurred with our earthwork. Our, our contractor on the earthwork did a fabulous job. So we're about a month ahead, and we've been shut down for about a month and just started here again two weeks ago with, with the work that they were doing to finish up the earthwork and prep for foundations. So we're actually right, right back on schedule, anticipating to be in the building, barring any other unforeseen situations that we're in that may impact schedules again, but, but we're looking pretty good to be in the building as, as planned. May-June timeline of next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Council, Vice President Barr? You're on mute. You're on mute. On mute.
I was just going to say, I didn't get my hand down fast enough. Between Jacob's comments and Jim's question, my question was answered, so I'm all set. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And I think, I think Councilmember Toy would like to ask a question.
You know, Madam Chair, you had said that you want to go offline, you know, with some type of appointment. You know, Councilman Kritzman did a fabulous job. And, you know, while we have some very good council people, I, I also think that having people from the outside sometimes that you may want to appoint would be a good idea, too. And I'm sure Kritzman would possibly still be, be available if no one else from the council wants to do it. Very possible. It might be worth, because he's got a good history on that. And I know he's really a pain to work with, Jacob, but, you know, I'm just joking. I'm just joking. I'm only joking. But, um, yeah, I, just a suggestion.
Yep. All right. Good suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So we've got that on the regular agenda for the March 27th meeting to review the authorization to purchase directly from the manufacturer for, or the vendor, I guess I should say, in an amount not to exceed $7,000. Thank you. And number 10 is a request to approve a purchase with the sole supplier, EJ USA Incorporated, formerly known as East Jordan Iron Works for a period of one year. Comes from the Public Service Division for the purchase of stormwater, water main and sanitary manhole related items in an amount not to exceed $75,000 annually. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you once again, Council President. So this item is related to purchases of water main items, sanitary sewer, storm sewer manholes, which are iron castings, as well as other iron components, as EJ is the premier iron foundry here in the state of Michigan. Fire hydrants, water main valves, and our logo covers for manholes. So like I said, they're manufactured here locally and supplied solely by EJ. The pricing that they have offered us for this one-year quote is consistent with our neighboring communities that we've checked with. It includes approximately, depending on which item you're looking at, between a 3% to 5% increase over 2019 pricing, which, as I had mentioned, we checked and is consistent with other neighboring communities. They're a local distribution center here regionally in Oak Park, and they're very, been very responsive and always have been in meeting other cities' needs as quickly as possible when we need those items. So it's our recommendation from the Public Service Division that council proceed to authorize purchases from EJ USA Inc. for these items not to exceed $75,000 annually from funds that are already budgeted for this purpose and waive the formal bidding process in accordance with city ordinances, since no advantage to the city would resolve from competitive bidding in this situation, as they are a sole provider of, of these products.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to offer an approving for consent in regards to this item. I think it's a really, if you look at the, the role and and really the title sole source provider that EJW has, it's actually a really neat company and, um, really the only choice, too, to be honest with you. So I'll offer that for consent. And then it's, uh, I, I believe, I may have missed it, but on the previous item, did we have a motion?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought, I thought Councilmember McCullough had offered one for regular, so I'm sorry.
For a resolution for a regular.
So we did have one.
I'll withdraw.
Wait. No, for the, Jim, are you talking about number nine or number 10?
The previous item.
Number nine.
Okay, and, and
I'm sorry.
And I believe Councilmember, I thought, unless I misunderstood. Okay. All right. Okay, so we're good. So 10. All right. Jim, you had just offered.
Thank you.
At number 10. Okay. All right. Are there any objections, council? And, and I should have asked on the previous one, too, if anyone in the audience wanted to speak. All right. Seeing none, we, at this time, we go back to audience indication. If anyone
Madam President, before we lose Mr. Rushlow, in recognition of your awesome Zoom background, would you like to segue into our weather report for tomorrow?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm qualified for that one, but I do appreciate the, the comments on the background. Zoom, or you could, you could definitely download some pretty neat backdrops for virtual backgrounds if you so choose.
Thank you. Thanks for all your input for tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. It does look like we're getting ready to show the snow coming for tomorrow. All right. No one in the audience wishes to speak? So at this time, we will, and I, I don't have a clock to look at, at 9:21? We will Yes.
Before, before we leave, and some of the comments that were made by our mayor, I think it behooves us to have residents and others reach out to their state representative, to their state senator, to their congresswoman, and their two state senators to pay attention to Livonia and some of our needs as it regards, um, all, I think Mr. McCullough alluded to it earlier in our meeting, too, that it's so important that, that we get those dollars back into this community. It's a wonderful community. And the measurement is a little bit unfair, and it's probably dated for the most part on the CBG stuff as it relates to this, you know, unexplainable kind of virus that's going on. So I just, I just think if anybody has any questions, I'm sure the mayor's office or our office will be happy to answer those. And how to direct, you know, their comments to some of those elected officials that can make some changes and, and do have a vote at those different levels. It's so important right now, government, as well as our healthcare providers, but more so with our government right now on some of these changes that are coming along, we really, really got to focus. And in this community, really needs some help in those directions. So I just wanted to share that with our viewing public, even three of them, if they're there, you know, to, to please help us out. And all of us, obviously, will be contacting our prospective elected officials. Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me indulge on that.
Uh, thank you. Well, well said, Councilmember Toy. All right. With that, I think we are ready to adjourn, and I, I would like to just once again acknowledge and say thank you to our former mayor, Jack Engerretson, for being on both of these Zoom meetings. It's, uh, it's just really neat to, to have him with us, and thank you. And thank you to Livonia TV. Thank you to everyone. Thank you to everyone who's hard at work behind the scenes and making so many things happen, that any issues with Zoom are because of, you know, sometimes my unfamiliarity with conducting meetings this way, or people forgetting to turn off mics. The technology, the support for all of us has been absolutely incredible to enable this. Everything else that happens in the city is the same way. So and all the department heads that get on and report to us, they're all working with, you know, shorthanded with not only their regular jobs, but COVID-19 related work, too. So, you know, just so proud to be part of this city and to have the incredible men and women of the city working every day to do all the things that happen. So thank you, everyone, and good night, Livonia.